Let's call this meeting to order. Roll call, please. Turn your mic on, Dee.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Here.
Councilmember Fitz Kelly?
Here.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Here.
Vice Mayor Bright Cruz?
Here.
Mayor McKay?
Here. Let's stand for the pledge, please.
Bob, you want to lead us?
Pledge, lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Amen. Amen.
All right. Could you please read the resolution?
This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida approving the selection and negotiating committee's ranking of Waste Pro of Florida, Inc. to provide the town solid waste recyclables and bulk waste collection and disposal services. Approving a franchise agreement between the Town of Southwest Ranches and Waste Pro of Florida, Inc. to provide the town solid waste recyclables and bulk waste collection and disposal services. And approving a sole source backup agreement between the Town of Southwest Ranches and Waste Pro of Florida for solid waste disposal and recyclables processing services. Authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into the agreements and providing an effective date.
All right. Can I get a motion in a second, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Andy, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. First of all, I do want to thank Sandy La Longo for her efforts on this, as well as the rest of town staff, Marty and Russell, and the town attorney. Something we've been working on for several months. Our current solid waste collection contract was awarded to SWS back in 2012. As you know, SWS sold their assets last year to Waste Management, and they reformed and they're currently serving the town under LGL. LGL is handling our collections and subcontracting their work out to Waste Management. So a renewal on our current contract is not an option. Therefore, several months ago, staff began preparing bid specs. Three responses were received, and Waste Pro provided the lowest price responsive bid and was unanimously recommended by the selection review committee. The contract, the staff memo, and key points were provided to you all previously, but I'd like to, if I can, touch on those key points for you tonight. First of all, there is a council decision for you to make tonight in addition to the contract as itself, and that is for you to decide whether or not you want to go to carted collection or not. Cost is virtually identical, as I shared with you. It's a difference of about nine cents a month per residential unit. Was anticipated that rolling carts would offer a lower collection cost, but that was offset by the cost of the carts themselves. So it could be considered beneficial to maintain the current system. If we changed to rolling carts, those with excessive waste would need to purchase a second or third cart and would pay additional costs for collection. Without changing the current system, whatever residents put out would be collected. Our current cost is $25.57 per home, per month. Our new cost will either be $44.89 for no cart or $44.98 per cart, depending on the collection method. The current vendor pricing was driven by numbers which were provided by Waste Management once upon a time and may have been incorrect, which caused SWS to operate unprofitably in Southwest Ranches. Comparison sake, 2012 collection costs were actually $46.32 per home, higher than the proposed contract. And just to touch on that for a minute, you may recall when the Broward County Solid Waste ILA came to the end of its term a couple of years ago, we had gotten contact from Broward County telling us what we would receive back as a refund, and that was based upon the 2012 collection numbers. Then they took it a step further, and they were actually going to give us a refund based on our 2011 numbers, which were much lower, and it was a much lower payback to the town. We pursued that with the county and actually conceded, and they refunded our money based on 2012. However, the SWS contract was actually based on those 2011 numbers. So they had entered into that contract assuming the lower numbers. Bulk in the new contract would be split from the current three zones into six zones for collection purposes. That allows the vendor increased efficiency and benefits the town in a couple of ways, and I know they're certainly prepared to talk about that tonight. But bulk trucks would be servicing our town weekly, so items that need to be collected beyond the normal cycle will be picked up in a timely manner, and it allows the vendor to increase their efficiency and got us a concession on another item I'll touch base on shortly. The other change on bulk will allow the vendor to properly document bulk over the limit and then collect it as part of their routine collection. Residents will be billed directly for the overage, and this improvement will eliminate the need for code to cite property owners and have unsightly bulk left behind for later pickup. One of the issues that we had with current contract with SWS was the penalties if they failed to perform. And I'm just going to give you a visual, which I'm going to pass out to you in a moment, but this page represents the current penalties in the SWS contract. This is what we've done with the new contract. I'm sure we won't have any issues with our vendor. I think they're going to be great, but we had issues in the past, and so we were able to build some things into the contract to better protect the town. I don't anticipate having to use those. I think we're starting off on a new and positive relationship. I think one of the issues we had with the other vendor was they were looking to exit the business. These guys, they're sticking around, you know? They're big, they're solid, they're not going anywhere, there's certainly no plans to sell out. They'll also handle complaints directly from their facility in Pembroke Pines, as opposed to the current system now where residents will call here, they'll deal with Sandy, they'll deal with Susan, it'll be relayed to the vendor. We try to address it in a timely manner, but there's multiple steps in the process. So we're going to simplify that. Complaints from residents will go directly to the vendor, they will respond to it, handle it, and will provide reports to staff so that we know what complaints are coming in and how they're being handled. The other issue that we wanted to touch on was to protect us on the disposal end. That was what I've talked about so far is the collection end, and that's the new contract. On disposal, we currently have a contract with Sun Bergeron. Sun Bergeron was a partnership between SWS and Bergeron's. SWS, as I said before, sold out their assets to Waste Management, they've exited the business. There is a great deal of animosity on that agreement. There's a lot of problems going on with the players in that, and I was concerned, Keith and I were very concerned, with the town's future on disposal and our options. We currently have one year left on that contract. We've been told that we have one five-year renewal on that, as provided for by the Department of Justice when they allowed Waste Management to purchase the SWS assets. We haven't seen that in writing, we don't know that for sure, and so in our efforts to protect the town long-term, we added a disposal component to the collection contract as an addendum, which gives us the same five-year terms on the collection contract, as well as a five-year renewal, which will protect the town going forward. So I think the other thing I wanted to talk about was household hazardous waste. We currently have four per year at Rolling Oaks Barn. When we started speaking with Waste Pro, they wanted to switch to two, and we had a lot of back and forth, and we were able to get that not only back to four, but actually to six, at our facility, and an additional two at their Waste Pro facility within Pembroke Pines. So it's actually enhanced services for our residents from that standpoint. So Mayor, I think I've kind of summarized it. I know Keith is going to have some pieces to fill in. No, he thinks he's got it. He thinks I've got it. Okay.
You know, Andy, for members of the public, the town administrator provided a complete memorandum that was available for the council and public review, and I actually wrote to Andy last night, and I said it was very well articulated and explained the entire agreement. So the gentleman from the second row behind Bob, who didn't lead us in the pledge, are here from Waste Pro. It's been a wonderful experience getting to know them. They not only want to be a short-term vendor, but a long-term partner with the town, and they're actually, I learned, one of the largest, or the largest, collection company in the United States at this point, correct? Am I saying that properly?
Largest in Florida.
In Florida. In Florida. I made you bigger than you are. But, so it looks like they'll be a great partner, and if you have any questions, either Andy, myself, or Waste Pro will be happy to answer.
Yeah, Mayor, if I may, the gentleman who was just speaking is Russell Mackey. He's the regional vice president for Waste Pro, and I know he certainly can introduce the rest of his team, and as council has questions, I know they're prepared to answer any questions or concerns you might have. Thank you.
Okay. I guess we're going to open it up to the public, then. Public comment.
Will Hollisworth, 199th Avenue. I don't have such great hopes, because I had great hopes with the last two, and towards the end, they all burned. So what are the penalties? How do they get them put into effect? Keith, can you make them work? The penalties? Are they good, solid penalties? What are they? No one said anything. Let's have a discussion on it. Someone describe what the penalties are for the first time, second time, third time, fourth time? And when do we shoot them? Because just take the last two weeks. Last week, they didn't pick up garbage until Friday on 199th. Today, well, yesterday, pardon me, they didn't pick up recycles. And when I left, they were still there, on the street. So what's the deal? What's the penalties? Will there be penalties for this taking place? What is it? Where is it? Someone explain it to me, in detail. The other thing is, it seems we got white goods, gray goods, black goods, yard waste, bulk waste, side waste. We need to have all those described to us. I'd like those. What are those? And how many little piles do we have to put out now? Thank you.
Bob Hartman, 5441 Southwest 198 Thursday. It's all here, if you read it.
Here's the penalties, by the way.
I have my copy.
Okay.
I only have one question. I thought I read it in here, and I'm not clear after going back into it. I might have picked it up on the bulk waste side. Is solid waste single stream? In other words, even if you put beer cans in a garbage can, are they going to be pulled out? And, you know, other recyclables pulled out of the trash? Because that will cut our tipping fees quite a bit, if you think about it. There's no cost on tipping fees, there's cost on what goes to the landfill. So that's one thing. Something else I wanted to bring up for your consideration tonight. Our garbage is going up quite a bit due to the artificially deflated fees we had last time, which, you sure we can't do another five years on that? In any case, a number of years ago, I made the suggestion that we look at bulk by property size, and you did it. I would suggest we look at trash fees based on number of cans, pails, 95-gallon containers that people buy, and I would recommend you go with the pails, because, I'll tell you something, it looks a lot better than 15 bashed-in garbage pails that are now this big that people are putting out because they've been bashed up by the garbage trucks, run over by the neighbor, everything else. I'd prefer the rolled carts, I guess is the technical term. But what I'm suggesting is, we use one garbage pail, because we do a lot of recycling. I have neighbors that also put out one garbage pail. So our contribution to the tipping fees that the town has to pay is pretty low. I also have one neighbor that puts out, can I have another minute? Six to 10 garbage pails every week, the big gray with the black lid ones. They're significantly contributing a lot more than other neighbors are to the tipping fees. Now, it's not that much of a difference to send the truck down the road, whether you got one pail, two pails, four pails, but the difference is in what the town pays to dispose of that waste. So I would recommend that once you get the inventory, everybody's bought their pails, when you do your tax assessments this summer for next year, you consider the number of garbage containers people have bought, and divide up that fee appropriately based on use, not the fact that you have an address in Southwest Ranches. Thanks.
Any other public comment? All right. Come on in.
One of the pictures forwarded here early that had to come up here to speak. How many was it?
Robert Parker, 14431 Mustang Trail. Last two pickups, the trash pickups, I've been in the hospital, so I haven't got, but I've got pictures of one violator on my street, time after time after time violation. And Andy was out there one time, and I showed him where trash went in the street. Now, who's going to police this, that the person is staying within the law of how much to put out? Who's going to police this?
They are. The waste people are.
And if they don't, I get to call them and bitch at them?
Apparently so.
Okay. Thank you. We're all person-based, Andy.
Any other public comment? Seeing no additional public comment, a public comment is closed. Back to the council.
Well, I guess I'll start.
Let's see where we go first, and then if they want to call them up and talk to them, we'll bother them, other than that.
The cost on this has gone up a lot, but if you break it down, it's about $20 a month per residence. The more you have, the more you get penalized. I don't think that's fair to the average person that can afford a bigger piece of property or a bigger home. He did his time, he worked for it, but he's got to pay more? There's homes on my street that are so small, and there's like 30 cans out, every week, 30 cans. But that's due to a business, or an agricultural business, let's put it that way. I don't put that many out. As far as the blue cans, the recycling cans, I've discussed it before when I sat out there, we're going to look just like Pembroke Pines. It's not rural. If you knew the money that some people have invested in these cans, they're not cheap. I just got two new lids from the garbage company that we have right now, because they run them over, they crack the snaps on them, and they won't lock down. So I got to go out there, and I got to pick up all the garbage that the raccoons and everybody else, you know, the ducks or whatever, have pulled out of the garbage. At one time, I suggested that we go to quarterly pickups, four times a year. What would that cost if we cut that back and only did, you know, bulk four times a year? And then everybody else be responsible for their own. Anything that took place in the past, prior to this new contract coming in, I'm going to say my glass is half full, and I'm going to say we're going to have a good relationship, and it's going to be great for the town. But I'm not in favor of the blue cans, guys, just so you know. The rolling carts. I have, seems like, a mile-long driveway, all gravel, which is my choice. I could have paved it, or asphalted, or put pavers down, but I like the gravel. I think it sounds neat, it looks neat, and above everything else, it's rural-looking, very rural. And that's the way I want to keep it, and the rolling carts don't work so good. And to try to lift them up and put them in the back of a truck to get them down there, it's pretty hard to do. Thank God I got a front-end loader, because that's where they go now. That's about all I have to say.
Who's next? Steve? Go ahead.
Thank you. Just a few comments, just a few comments, and a question. So I don't really want to go through this whole, I mean, I recognize that probably the single biggest issue that we have today is all the disappointment that we've had. I've way lost count of the number of times residents have called me about different, either things that were not picked up, gouges in their property, their cans, you know, whatever. It's really been bad, recycling not picked up, the whole nine yards. I'm not going to read through this whole list, because it's very lengthy. I will read through the first several, just to give a flavor to those that are listening in on what this is like. Failure to transmit, transmission plan, or transition plan within 30 days, $1,000 per day. Failure to meet schedule outline in the town-approved transition plan, $250 per incident. Failure to neglect to resolve a valid complaint, $250 for each complaint missed. Failure to repair damage to public property, public or private property, $1,000 per incident per day. Mixing the materials in violation, $1,000 per occurrence. Failure to comply hours, days, operations, $250 per occurrence. That's about a third or a quarter through the whole list, and it just continues that way. So this is a serious list of occurrences, or a list of penalties that could be, you know, come into play. And so this is nowhere near, as Andy pointed out, nowhere near what we had before. You know what? I hope and I expect that we're never going to have to implement these, but what gives me comfort is that you all are willing to sign a contract with all this in this, because it tells me that you all are a quality organization that do things right. That's what it tells me. Aside from that, I do want to kind of weigh in on the rolling carts. To be honest with you, going into this process, I really felt like we were at a point in time where the rolling carts were the way to go, because of the efficiencies, the lower cost involved, and, you know, I understand the rural aspect of it. I will tell you that much of my family lives out in Colorado and Oklahoma in very rural areas, and this is the process they use out there. So it's, I think it's all over, and I think, anyway, I'll just leave that there. So that didn't play into my thinking too much, but I get that it's a different, it's a different look. What was compelling to me was the contract itself, where it's actually going to be more expensive, basically, for less service to go with those rolling bins, because it's virtually the same cost, a few pennies more, but now the residents are limited to the one bin versus putting out, you know, whatever. If they have a big party, we just had one at our house a few months ago, where we had, you know, close to 100 people at the house for a wedding reception, and I, I'll tell you, we put out a load of garbage that next pickup. And so that, I can just see, I would have been having to dole that out for weeks to come to get it all out there when the others. So I don't think it makes sense to pay more for less service, so I've changed my thought on that, and I would prefer to go with the plan that we've got in place. The one thing I did want, just a final comment before I get to the question, is that, you know, there have been times when my family was younger, and they were all in the house and raising a family, where I was one of those guys that put out a load of garbage every time the truck went by, and, you know, just a growing family. Now it's my wife and I, and I'm one of those guys that puts out a half a can every other week, you know? It's just one of those things. So I took advantage of the system for a little while, now I'm paying my dues. So I think it evens out over in the long run. The one question that I do have is, has to do with the disposal piece. So we have one year left on the current contract. I'm not sure whether I'm asking this to which way. Probably me. Okay. Okay. So we have one year left on the current contract. I'm assuming that we can break that contract without penalty and move to this, or are we waiting a year? I mean, does this not? When do they kick in? If we were to add that addendum on there, how would that transition work, I guess is what I'm asking.
Sure. The current agreement with the town and the former SWS, Sun Bergeron disposal, is clearly in breach, okay? They sold the business, they didn't seek the town's consent for the assignment, which was required by the contract. They're using vehicles that weren't permitted by the contract. There's a whole slew of reasons why they're in complete breach of that contract. They don't have a performance bond up anymore, you know? All the reasons were outlined in documents by both the county, MIR Mar, and others that are being serviced by them as well. The town was silent. We'd been asked for several months now to draft letters of breach to them as well, but we wanted to finish our discussions with Waste Pro to see what a letter of breach would have done. Because if I was that joint venture partner, and someone wrote to us and said, "We are in breach," I would write, "All right, you're right, cancel." Okay? And they haven't gotten there yet, but they will at some point. And if they said, "Okay, cancel, because Waste Management wants out of that agreement," the town would have been left in a pretty bad situation. So when we discussed with Waste Pro the ability to take over the disposal leg, and they said, you know, that others had asked them the same thing recently, and it looks like the future of waste collection disposal may be going the way that we're going, which is having a single hauler pick up and dispose, much easier than the transfer stations and other things that were going on. This now gives the town the freedom to finally be able to put them on notice, saying, "You're in breach, you need to give us your bond, you need to get consent for the transfer, you need to have the vehicles that aren't leaking the transmission fluid all over our town." Hydraulic fluid, thank you. And if you don't cure that breach within 10 days, you know, we're terminating your agreement. And we're allowed to do that under the terms of that contract. They are in full breach of that agreement right now. So this finally gives us the backup, and we're very thankful for Waste Pro for giving us the backup, to saying, "You're in breach, now we have a solution if you choose not to cure your breach." The second thing is, there's tremendous disagreement right now between Bergeron and Waste Management about the future of that contract and the renewal. Bergeron has stated that the Justice Department has told them in writing that the municipalities are legally allowed to seek a five-year extension under that agreement, which would be our right to a first extension. We've never seen that. I've called the Justice Department, they don't know what they're talking about, okay? And I've asked on several occasions. They are currently in litigation over multiple reasons, and that's one of them, okay? The recent round of the litigation has asked the municipalities to all join Bergeron in the litigation to allow Bergeron's legal counsel to basically represent the municipalities in their fight against Waste Management, which the town has said, "We have enough litigation right now, we're going to sit on the sidelines." So to answer your question a little bit more succinctly, the ability to have that disposal agreement enables us to finally inform them that they're in breach. If you don't cure, we're canceling. And by the way, if we cancel, although you've told us for the last five years that you're the savior because we can never get disposal cheaper, we're actually getting it 69 cents cheaper with the new vendor that we're using.
Right. Okay. So there's no issue of this contract, of this contract going into place, and them saying, "Oh, no, we're going to continue to do your disposal until the end of the year." I mean, that would, so then that would just mean that they would go to a different location? I'm just trying to get in my mind how that would work.
They are in the process of negotiating with the places now on where they bring trash to, okay? So whether or not, I think there's two locations, the old Willabrader being one, and then there's one other location, and basically, they negotiate their rate with them, and that's their split on the profit. So if they're charging us, I think it's $44 a ton, or whatever it is, they're trying to negotiate the cheapest rate with Willabrader or the other location, because their profit margin is what the town's paying them and what they can dump it for. Now, I'm sure they would tell you, without getting into their business, but the way I understand it, and guys, please correct me if I'm wrong, that the more cities that allow them to dispose of their waste, the better off their negotiation power is, because they're dealing with more tonnage and they can get more favorable terms. So where they take their waste, we don't really care. I mean, if you care, please tell us now.
No, I don't. I'm trying to understand how it's going to work.
But that's how it works. So they're going to collect the waste and group it together with all their other cities. They represent a lot of cities, and all the other cities who want to use them for disposal, they're going to all take them to the same location. I hope they get $35, you know, a ton, because the lower they go, when we come back up for renewal in the future, maybe they'll pass on some of the savings to the municipalities. So, you know... to the municipalities. So, you know, they have choices to make on where they're gonna take it to. We have the right to approve that location, but they're gonna negotiate the best deal that they possibly can, which in the long run keeps our rate as low as possible. And even the forty-four versus the four-sixty-nine that we're currently paying is a nice savings to the town. Marty, was it over twenty thousand dollars a year?
It could be, it could be, yes.
You know, on that saving. So, you know, thankfully for, even that, just sixty-nine cents can make a huge difference, and we're thankful for Waste Pro for stepping up. And, you know, in my opinion, I've told them that, I think that once other municipalities see what the town did, it's gonna be a domino effect with everyone calling their, their collection company and saying, "We want you to dispose," you know, to get out from under the, the other issues.
Good, thank you.
Please, guys, jump in if I said anything improper.
Pretty well, that one.
All right, any, any, Gary, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Waiting for everybody to cycle through, I'll give my pearls of wisdom, or lack of. I think the issue on carts, I don't see that as being an issue. You know, one of the things out here in the ranches is we, we don't like change. That's how we formed our town, that was why we formed our town. We don't like change. We don't want people in our backyard telling us what to do. We don't want people in our front and side yard telling us what to do. We wanna do what we've been doing for the last thirty, forty years. And everybody goes out and puts out, you know, stuff. I personally use carts just because it's easier, it's convenient, even my wife can do it, you know, at times. And we're empty nesters, pretty much, so it's, we don't have that much trash and bulk. So I would, I would be in favor of just keeping things the way they are, not, not switching over to the carts. We already have the recycling cart, and I have a, personally have a green cart, the same size, but I just use that for convenience. But anyway, that was one of the biggest things that the residents were telling me, was they didn't really wanna go to the carts, from what I was gathering throughout, throughout my conversations. The other thing, and I'd like to hear this from the vendor if I could, so I'm gonna put you guys a little on the spot. Russell, this is going to YouTube? This is, yeah, okay. So, so when people ask, I can, I got a reference point. What I'm gonna ask you to do is, if you could explain the bulk, two, two, two areas. One is where it's going from three zones to six, and the area where if a resident has put out too much bulk, how you're going to determine that the bulk is too much, so that they, they know what the rules are. In other words, do you have a twelve-foot PVC grid that you put up, take a picture, and, you know, flop, that's it, you exceed that, then we, then you get the penalty, or you're under this, you know, that kinda silhouette of a, we used to use Volkswagen bus as a, you know, as an example, you know, picture that, and that was the size you were allowed to have. So since this is gonna be done without, without code under the new contract, the residents need to know what criteria, I guess is probably the word I'm looking for, but you're gonna do that. So if you could explain the three, the three, excuse me, the six zones from three zones, and the, how you measure those.
Let me add, add to that. The other thing is, the residents aren't gonna realize till this actually comes into play, that if they're, whatever the overage is, that they're gonna get back charged and get a bill in the mail for it. So that's gonna be a new feature, and that's why we want kinda that, that explanation.
Yeah, that's, that's gonna be like, that's gonna be like a sticker shock thing, where all of a sudden, it shows up in the mailbox, as opposed to, and I think we're gonna get that call.
Here's an additional cost.
As council members, we're gonna get that call first before we get anything else, you know, or where's the truck?
Yeah, and what the cost will be, you know, that you're gonna be charging. Is there a chart that they can call Town Hall and say, you know, "If I'm over, how much is it gonna cost me?"
All right, can I chime in real quick?
Sure, go ahead.
Russell, if I can direct you, because I'll direct the two phases, because there's a lot of questions being asked here. If you could first explain to the council how we got to the six zones, when originally we were pretty adamant on three, but explain to them why you went to six, and
What that's gonna do.
And how the benefit is for the town. So let's start there.
Okay, Russell Mackey, Regional Vice President, Waste Pro Florida, 17302 Pines Boulevard. Thank you very much for even the consideration here, really appreciate that. A lot of good questions, a lot of good points. I'd be remiss if I didn't say that you got two good staff members there that really, that beat us up and put us through the wringer pretty well. But I think we ended up with a, you know, very balanced, you know, good partnership for both parties. With regards to the bulk, you know, in our growth of becoming the largest solid waste provider in the state of Florida, you can't just rip the Band-Aid off and draw that line in the sand and be harsh. You gotta have a good education plan, it's something that we specialize in, and, you know, we're gonna do a lot of notification to your residents. We'll have an initial mailing that goes out, but then even when the resident does it wrong the first time, you get more flies with honey than you do vinegar. We'll do a courtesy collection, explain that this is outside of what, you know, we're supposed to be doing, give an education of this is what it should look like going forward. We'll keep really good records of that, so we, so, you know, a year goes by and it happens again, we can say, "Hey, you remember on this date, we've already been through that." It's real, you know, basically to put it down, twelve cubic yards is twelve washer machines, six back-to-back, lined up with each other. We're not gonna be out there with a tape measure saying, "Oh, well, you got thirteen washer machines out here." But to transition into why the, the change in the zones is important and significant, this is really, you know, I'm born and raised in Broward County in Fort Lauderdale, been here my whole life, and I was shocked to learn how much property, you know, is actually in this town, and how big this town is for having twenty-five hundred.
So when you're moving in.
Yeah. There's a lot of really magnificent, you know, lots out there and homes as well. But really, you know, the, the, the size of the town was a shocker to me, and it's just something you all should be very proud of. With the twelve zones, the twenty-five hundred homes that you do have, they produce a tremendous amount of yard waste and bulk. And currently, all of that has to be collected in just six days, six workdays of the month. That creates, you know, we've learned a lot, you have to have consistency. And to have consistency, you wanna be able to stretch that, because you wanna have the same trucks and same people going to those, those homes. If you have workers that work just Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday of this week, then you have nothing for them to do all of the back half of the week, and then all of the next week, and then they come back and work just Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. You gotta find other things for them to do. So you know what? They like consistency. So they say, "Why do you have me working in southwest ranches when I can have this route over here and I'm there every single week?" So we want to have those same drivers, and by stretching that out, you're able to take this massive amount of stuff and collect it in twelve days rather than six days. It doesn't dirty the town up anymore, it's not any more that it's sitting out there longer. None of that changes, it just takes it and it puts it across twelve zones. What that helps us with, you need less pieces of equipment, same, same amount of volume, but, you know, half the amount of equipment, and then you can have consistency with the employees. They get to know the area, they get to know the put-out, they get to know what the expectations. It also helps in this education process, when people do it the, the wrong way, rather than not having trucks back in the area to collect for another week, we're gonna have them in the, in the town the very next week. So if we do have to do a special consideration or courtesy pickup, we're gonna have the equipment here to do that. So we felt, we felt that that was very important as part of the education and not ripping the Band-Aid off to have that ability. In return for that, we said, "Hey, you know what, rather than taking away the two has-waste events, you know, we'll throw another two in," because we just believe, you know, our reputation is very important to us, and if we're not giving service, the amount of penalties, that we have to report those. When we go for a bid, they say, "Hey, have you been fined by a city, or a town? What have you been fined?" We have to report those when we're going forward. You don't wanna have a significant amount of fines on any, you know, whether it's two-hundred homes, twelve-hundred homes, twenty-five-hundred, or forty thousand, fifty thousand homes in some of the cities that we do. So we're going at it just saying, "Hey, let us, let us do what we do, let us show you the best way to service." And, and we feel that that's a very strong, you know, thing that by, by taking those tons and spreading them out over twelve days, you have a lot more margin for error, you also have a lot more leeway for education. With also saying that it's not going to just be out more often, it just splits the zones. Right now, you have three zones that are picked up every other week, it just basically cuts those zones in half and takes half of those zones and makes it the off week. So the current sections, they'll, they'll still be on Monday, you know, that people are used to. Half of that zone will be on one Monday, half of the zone will be on the other. We're gonna publish a schedule, we put together a map, there will be the dates. Again, people aren't perfect, they put it out, somebody says, "Hey, I screwed up." We're right around the corner on 172nd and Pines Boulevard, it's not, you know, a big hassle, especially if somebody, you know, owns up to and says, "Hey, we had a problem, we did it wrong." We wanna work with you, not against you. That was my long-winded answer, I apologize.
Andy, let me ask the question, this may be directed toward you more, more than to them. We currently, right now, have a rule where you can put out bulk on, let's say, a Friday night, starting
Forty-eight hours.
Yeah, well, if you have pickup on Tuesday, you can start on the weekend. And that's a big factor for the airline pilots, people that are out of town over, I hear that comment amongst the housewives, believe it or not, "My husband's in town this week, but not next week," you know, that kinda thing. Who polices that? Is that still gonna be a code function?
That's done by code, and I don't envision that changing. It'll be exactly the same, we'll just spread it to the six zones rather than the three zones.
Okay.
But we'll still allow, we kind of, Friday afternoons loosely, we'll let people put out, so they can put it out over the weekend for their Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday collection the next day. So from a staff standpoint, we're not gonna change our approach on that.
Okay. I just wanna, just wanna make sure I get that on the record, as far as that goes. Okay, that was all the questions I had at that.
All right, anyone else? Any questions? All right, my position is, we stay the same, no bins. And because out of the residents I've spoken to, the majority of them just want it to stay the same, they don't want the rolling carts, they don't, you know, they say have some rolling garbage cans, but most of the people I spoke to said, "Keep it the way it is." So I tell you that, so, other than that, I'm done. So where do we go? You got a motion and a second, just call the question?
I think so.
All right. Keith, we wanna clarify, or Andy, do we need to clarify anything other than we want it to stay the same and not use the bin?
No, no, the contract's clear.
I think, yeah, council consensus is clear.
Okay.
We're good.
That's the motion for it to stay the way it read, as is.
Okay.
Approve the contract as is.
Call, call the question.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breckus?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Awesome.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion, accept motion. Do I get a second? I don't need one. Motion to adjourn. Thank you, gentlemen.
Great, thank you.
Really appreciate it.